This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 5A, action on the open and close minutes from November 28th, 2023. I have no changes.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. They're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to comment on items not on the agenda? Any comments on items not on the agenda? Hearing none. We're going to move on. Number seven, written communications or announcements. I have a proclamation recognizing the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club. So gentlemen would like to meet me in the corner over here? We'll go right over here. Okay. Unfortunately, the Friday Morning Optimist Club in the village of Ashwabnan is disbanding. So we've done a proclamation for them. They have done so much good in all the years that they've been here, and I thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart what you've done for our community. Okay, in honor of the Ashwabnan Optimist Club, whereas the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club was formed in 1976 and has served the Ashwabnan community with the primary mission to be friends of the youth. And whereas the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club has engaged in many fundraising activities, including but not limited to an annual Oktoberfest raffle, bingo games, rummage sale, craft shows, and youth basketball tournaments, raising approximately $20,000 per year. And whereas Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club used its fundraising earnings to serve youth in the village of Ashwabnan in many ways, including but not limited to a new concession stand at Gales Field, books for the local reading as fundamental program, and annual scholarships for high school graduates. And whereas the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club also provided funds for up to 60 needy families to shop for their children's Christmas presents annually. And whereas the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club provided funding to purchase special glasses for youth who had profound vision challenges. And whereas the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club also gave of themselves through countless volunteer hours at numerous community events. And whereas, after 47 years of dedicated service to youth in our community, October 27th, 2023 marked the last official meeting of the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club. Now therefore, I, Mary Kardowski, President of the Village of Ashwabnan, on behalf of the entire village board, do hereby recognize the Ashwabnan Friday Morning Optimist Club for their dedicated service toward Ashwabnan youth. I thank you so very, very much from the bottom of my heart. Does anybody want to say? Would anybody like to speak? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, moving on. Number eight, action on the consent agenda. 8A, consider, discuss act on election inspector appointments for the 2024-2025 election cycle. Consider, discuss act on a grant of easement for the shops at the village signage landscaping and lighting, 2630 Holmgren Way, parcel VA-160-6-6. Consider, discuss act on the approval of a utility easement to TDS MetroCom for fiber line coming into Village Hall. D, Public Works Monthly Department Report. E, Investment Report. F, Budgeted Expenditures. And G, General Fund Financial Report, November 2023, year-to-date. Does anybody want anything pulled for discussion, or I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Can we pull 8C, please?
Jesus.
Okay. You said 8C?
8C, yes.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve everything except 8C.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve everything in the consent agenda except 8C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Motion carried. Carry. Okay, so what would you, what is your discussion point on 8C?
For 8C, I just wanted to have staff work with TDS MetroCom on the route for the easement. I would like to approve the easement, but allow staff to check into it, make sure the easement is where they would like it to be, and it's going to work for doing the line-in and not prohibiting any development in the future.
And I'll just touch on that. Tracy did address this issue with me prior to the meeting. At present, the easement right now basically runs from more or less the access road along Ashland Avenue over to our Public Works facility in Village Hall. It does kind of meander through the Bill Diamond property or park property. So the question is, should the easement really be located between the community gardens area and the soccer field, or between the soccer field and the pond? So what staff is looking for tonight is, the board could still approve an easement with TDS MetroCom with the direction that staff work with TDS MetroCom to update and confirm the location and the legal description that would then coincide with that, that location. So ultimately, you'd be authorizing staff to execute the easement with the understanding that the location of that easement and the description may be altered based on what was presented tonight.
Okay. Does everybody understand that?
How long has Public Works been working with TDS on this? They've been in our area for, what, over a year? They've done a good job. I have never heard any complaints.
This is, this is a request internally between staff, and just confirming that staff has the proper location. So this particular easement is to service Village Hall with an additional internet service and cable. So this is really an internal issue. It's not necessarily an issue that the village has with TDS. It's just a confirmation that the individual departments have a firm understanding where that location should be, and to avoid any future conflicts with the easement of that utility and the different elements of that property between soccer, community gardens, and the pond. So this is really more of an internal issue than it is an issue between us and TDS.
So staff feels these are the right, this is the right locations?
That, that is the issue at hand, is whether or not the north-south leg of that easement is properly located. Right now, the easement runs on the southern leg of the property, past the pond and the soccer field, and then moves to the north between the community gardens and the soccer field. And then it, it follows the northern property line to our facilities here. The question is, that north-south leg, should it occur between the community gardens and the soccer field, or should that leg be placed between the soccer fields and the pond? So that's really the issue. Again, it's, it's an internal discussion that staff need, need to have to confirm that location is appropriate to avoid any future conflicts down the road.
So what's the staff's recommendation? Do they have one?
Well, I, my understanding, the Parks Department has some concerns about that easement between the community gardens and the soccer field as it relates to the, either the expansion of the community garden area or the relocation of facilities. Public Works has some concerns about the location of it between the soccer field and the pond in the event the pond expands in the future. So again, it's an issue that we need to resolve internally and then ultimately put, put the best path forward.
So it should just, this just be pulled from this agenda and bring it back?
Correct. As Tracy has pulled it, I don't know that the item necessarily has to come back, per se. You can approve an easement with TDS MetroCom to go through the property. At this point, it's a matter of where do we identify where the least amount of conflict will occur? And then it's, it's a legal description change. That's all that ultimately is. And Patrick and staff can work together in devising that appropriate language.
Yeah, I don't believe it has to come back, in my opinion, but I think that we should approve the TDS easement, but allow staff to work with TDS to make sure that it is where they want it. Whether the extension of even the, the buildings in the back might impact it. So just giving staff a little time to make sure it's exactly where they want, and all the parties that are using that area are okay with where it's at. So my motion would be to approve the easement and allow staff to work with TDS to finalize it.
Isn't that what it's all about from the beginning? Staff to take care of it?
I, I-
That's why we would approve it. Am I correct?
Yeah, and I, and it was my understanding that it was resolved, but as of five minutes before the meeting, that, that hasn't been the case, actually. So we need to, we're asking you to not approve the easement as it's being presented tonight. From a standpoint of the legal description in the map, we as staff need to identify where that appropriate north-south connection should be placed. And once we have that worked out, then I think we can bring that back for it. So Gary, this is, this is our issue that apparently wasn't an issue until about five minutes ago, so we will, we will work through it. We're just asking for the board to, to give us that authority to do so.
Okay.
But that's Tracy's motion, right?
Right. That's her motion. So I need a second before we keep discussing this.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the easement and let staff internally decide where exactly that easement goes. Correct? Correct?
Correct.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number nine, public hearing. Public hearing on ordinance number 012-1-23, creating 5-8-764 Perrin G, Ashwabnan Municipal Code, Pool Safety Covers. Is there anybody in the audience that would, this is a public hearing, so is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? If you'd like to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chris Hookard, and we reside at 1480 Waterford Drive. My better half over there. We are advocating for allowing residents in Ashwabnan to have an option, if they're putting in a pool, to be able to have a fence or an automated pool, automated pool cover for that. We began researching pools not too long ago, and we quickly realized that technology has brought great changes to the types of pools you can put in and the safety features surrounding those pools. We contacted a couple different pool companies as we were looking into this, and as they were walking on the yard and we were looking at logistics of that, we, all of them said to us, well, check with your village because you may not need to put a fence in. You may be able to use the automated pool cover, which communities are going to. So I called Ashwabnan, and I spoke with one very friendly person who, who was great. She had indicated that, yeah, we know about those. We heard about them a couple of years ago. We've talked about it, but we never brought it to the board, which was fine. I did some further research because I was curious, and checked the surrounding communities and found out that there are communities since 2014 and beyond that have been going to offering their residents the option of that. Appleton does it, Howard does it, Ledgley does it, and there are other surrounding communities that in lieu of a fence, you could put this pool cover in. Interestingly enough, as I was looking into this, some communities, surrounding communities, Wrightstown and others, they have no ordinance on pools. So I don't quite know how that works, but we did find that out. We checked with our insurance company, and we have a friend who owns an insurance business. We were talking about putting a pool in, and he says, from an insurance perspective, insurance companies prefer to have the automated pool cover to a fence. So we, I wondered to understand why that was, and what these municipalities have done is they have gone to, to standards they offer. There's something called the American Society of Testing and Materials that has standards for automated pool covers. And as long as you meet those standards, what the municipalities have been writing into their ordinance is, as long as you follow these standards, have the pool cover or have a fence. So I checked into what the standards were. My husband actually did a lot of that. And he, the standards, you have to be able to support 485 pounds of weight on these pool covers. There has to be an enclosed lock box for these pool covers that have to be in a physical proximity to be able to see the entire pool. In order to get into that lock box, to, to move that pool cover back and forth, you have to have a physical key. So, and the homeowner, if they are not in the pool, they need to have that pool cover closed. That's what all of the ordinances of these other communities say. From a homeowner's perspective, there seems to be great motivation to keep those pool covers closed when you're not in it because, A, number one, it traps heat in the pool and keeps the heating costs down. It keeps all debris, leaves, animals, everything out of the pool, which cuts down on chemicals and does an awful lot as far as cutting down on maintenance of that pool. Pool owners that we know that have been putting these in say it's kind of almost a must-have. I mean, it, it cuts down on a lot of the work. Contrast that to a fence, and fences are good, too, but deer can jump over it. You know, kids can jump over it. They can be left unlocked. And then what you're exposed to is an open pool. So I think, you know, I'd appreciate, or we would appreciate if we would give consideration to allowing some flexibility. It's the homeowner's liability, and we are the ones that are, you know, obviously want to keep our property safe and keep animals out of the pool and keep all that other stuff. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody else who would like to speak for or against this item? I need a motion to close the hearing, please.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, number 10A, consider, discuss act on ordinance number 012-1-23, creating 5-8-764 Perrin G, Ashwabnan Municipal Code, Pool Safety Covers. Aaron.
All right, thank you. As you heard during the public hearing, this was brought forward by Trustee Krieger. I did research, the surrounding municipalities discovered similar to the testimony at the public hearing. It is a mixed bag. There are some communities that allow for pool covers or others that don't, and there are some that don't have any regulations at all. In terms of, I did include a brief cheat sheet of those that, that I did research and provide background on, those that allow pool covers and those that don't. In terms of public safety, I did discuss this with public safety staff. They are supportive of the change to allow for pool covers as presented in the ordinance. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What's up? It was brought up automated pool covers. Is there a difference between automated and, I would guess there are, automated and non-automated and?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
Go ahead. But yeah, Chris, I've seen this on my brother-in-law's pool, and it's totally, I actually got some pictures. I think it's difficult for people when they haven't seen it. Could just pass a couple of these down. Maybe you guys can see it and see what it actually looks like. I didn't get a copy for everybody, but it's not a pool cover that lays over the top. It basically is built in. It's built in underneath the deck of the pool, or there's a system that builds on the top of the pool. So it's totally encloses the pool. So it isn't anything like we would have remembered about a pool cover.
Yeah.
Completely different. Completely different system. Like I said, my brother-in-law's got it done in Indianapolis. I've seen it operate. It's a pretty slick system.
So we're talking about here, though, so, so this motion, so not, so a non-automated pool cover, that's, there's none that exists that are going to have the safety measures that?
No, no. It has to be an automated one, because that's the only way you're going to get the 485 pounds to be able to hold it.
Kind of thing, that's my question, yeah.
Just to be clear, the ordinance right now does not specify automated pool covers. It just specifies pool covers that can support 100 pounds per square foot. So there are manual pool covers as well as automated ones. If you'd want the automated specified in the ordinance, we certainly can include that as an amendment to the ordinance on the motion.
Is this for any size pool, too? Whether it's, you know, a small, above-ground or below-ground and?
These are really only applied to in-ground pools. The systems would not work on an above-ground pool.
Okay, so then above-ground pools would still have to have a fence around them?
Or if they are the takedown kind, you have to take the ladder out of it.
Okay.
So the ones that you, you know, the Walmart version that you put up and take down every spring and winter.
Then they just have to remove the ladder from it?
That's correct.
Okay. And then in the ordinance, it says 100 pounds per square foot, and then it says 485 pounds. That's total?
Correct.
So the 100 pounds per square foot would be acceptable, would meet the same guidelines, if more so, maybe?
It's kind of just different companies stating different. The 485 pounds is, is what comes from that, yeah, that's the actual safety group that does the research. That's where the 485 pounds come from. But seeing this cover, and I've seen what's run across it, I could walk across it.
Easily.
Yeah, easily. It's not going anywhere. So they're pretty slick.
I have no problem with this, but why are we limiting it to just automated?
I just think the security part of it, Chris, because if it's not automated, I don't know how, I don't know how it's going to get secured tight enough, because if you're going to have to manually have to do this.
Because of the weight?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you look at that picture, the way it's actually, the rail system and that, I don't know how.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
How, how it would work if it wasn't automated. I really don't.
Right.
Again, the mechanical part of it.
No, I get it. It makes sense. I'm just asking.
It maybe could. I don't know, but I, yeah.
Yeah.
Jade, does that, you know, we had that at Public Works and Protection, and I kind of looked at it as a tunnel cover on a truck, you know? But I wouldn't want to walk on a tunnel cover on a truck, that's for sure. I, I voted against it, but after listening to her explanation of the weight it can carry, I can understand where it is a safety feature. I've seen covers and I've had, I'm kind of familiar with covers on a pool, and I've seen some bad incidents where my daughter, my sister lost a dog because the dog got underneath the cover and didn't survive. We've heard stories of kids getting underneath it and not making it. What they're talking about here, I would definitely, wouldn't mind approving something like this with the specs that she wrote. They're talked about. But I'd still want the fence and the cover, both. One or the other, what I would prefer to see. But I would like to see those specs in our ordinance, because you're going to find somebody who's going to cheat, and I don't want to see that in this particular incident, because you don't want to get somebody under there and then they're stuck. So if there are no other questions, I would approve this with the, with the stipulation of the specs that were told to us or whatever's on your spec sheet, Jay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Why don't you make the motion? You know what you're talking about.
Right. So I'm going to make the motion to approve this with the condition of adding to the ordinance, I'm doing if I'm doing this right, Chris, sorry, to, to support- Jade, one second. Yep. If you could just state on the record what you think the specification should be? Okay, I think it should be following the American Society of Testing and Material Standards. Okay. Which is the 485 pounds. Okay. And, and also additionally be an automated pool cover.
Is there anything in there, Jay, about sealed? Meaning, you cannot get in there at all unless the cover is roll back?
I don't believe it. I don't know if it's actually in that standard, Gary. When I was reading through it, I didn't actually say it call out sealed or anything, but if you look at the pictures of it.
You ain't getting in there.
You ain't getting in there.
We have a motion, but I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
One second. So just going to say for the record, if we could have the specs on, on the record, so 485 pounds to hold the maximum, or at least a minimum, automated pool cover. So why does the motion be, motion to approve with amendments as stated on the record?
Do you think the weight should be in there? Because it sounds like, in here, someone has 100 pounds, and then that says 45, and you said some are different. So maybe if it's just stated, it has to meet the ATMS standard?
Yeah, meets the standard, then you're 485 pounds.
Covers can, you know, meet that standard. Maybe the weight doesn't need to be in there.
That's what I was going to say. Don't have all the specific numbers. Just say it has to be in accordance with the ASF standards.
Make the standard.
Those might change over time, too.
That's right.
And then we can just, we don't have to keep amending the ordinance.
Yeah.
Be good with that, Patrick?
Sure.
Okay.
Is there something in there about the lock box for the key?
That is actually part of the standard.
Oh, it is a standard. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this item. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
So Jade, when you're putting your pool in?
I'm, I'm going to swim in there.
Okay. 10B, consider, discuss act on appeal of denied operator license, Crystal Crespo. Chris? So in the packet was the denial letter, the original application, the second application, and a letter from Crystal Crespo. She is appealing the denial. Ashwabnan Department of Public Safety has denied her first application for failure to disclose, disclose a pending charge in the second application per guideline 2A. Ms. Crespo didn't appear at the Public Works and Protection Committee on December 5th, and the committee upheld the denial. And I see she's not here today either.
Move to deny.
Second.
A motion and a second to deny the appeal of the operator license for Crystal Crespo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10C, consider, discuss act on Village of Ashwabnan Resolution Number R 12-1-23, approving fees for operator license. Patrick?
This is a request from staff to increase the fees. I believe it's $30 right now to review the operator's license or bartending license application. $30, we've seen is probably not even coming close to recovering some of the cost that it takes and the amount of time that it has for all staff to review the bartender's license application. I guess with that said, $60 to request an increase probably doesn't cover that as well, but at least it's kind of a start. Well, staff has noticed, especially in the clerk's office, can probably highlight this a little bit more. There has been a considerable amount of time spent reviewing the bartender's license and application. Just the one that was denied here for a no-show, probably a good, fair amount of, a couple of hours are probably involved in that. That is not to mention public safety time as well. That, what happens running the background check and filing a fee for that. That what happens running the background check and filing a fee for that and costs for services for the background check. So with that, this would be an amendment basically to. The licensing schedule that was just approved a few months ago, but this, since this is the only one. Need to be approved after January to coordinate with the village's approved budget. So this is the one that's just being recommended today by staff.
What, what, what are they paying right now, Patrick?
$30.
$30? You're going to bump it to 60?
Correct.
I think you should bump it to 100.
How does it align?
Kind of agree with Gary.
That would take care of a lot of issues.
Patrick, do we know how it aligns with like the city of Green Bay and other places? Whatever, do we know what those are?
I don't. Chris or Joel, you guys know?
Just any.
I did a little research on it and this is pretty middle of the road.
60?
I think their county was higher, but 60 is, you know.
What's the highest?
I think it was 75.
I'd go 100.
Well, I think, Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, that the state is looking at. The people to do their own background checks?
Yeah, correct.
So, you know, that might change and then. It should be pretty good.
I'd make a motion to recommend the approval of Resolution R 12-123, approving fees for operators license and $60.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R 12-1-23. The new fee for the operator's license. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10D, Consider Discuss Act on Lombardi Access Road Area Pedestrian Accommodations. Brian Ricker.
All right, so as you guys are aware, part of our capital improvement plan for 2024 includes the reconstruction. Of the Lombardi Access Road, which includes the addition of pedestrian accommodations on the south side of that roadway. Going back, starting back in October, we started scoping the project, kind of really drilled down what we were looking for. Brought multiple different options to our bicycle and pedestrian committee. And with that, we have a final proposed layout that was included in your packet. I'll walk through that layout. And if there are any questions or comments, feel free to ask. So as you start on the west side of the project, if you look up on the screen, kind of in the top left corner is where Cabela's is located. At that point in time, there is actually sidewalk on the west side of Argon that's existing. We're proposing to put a mid-block crossing that would tie into the south side of Lombardi Access Road. At that location, we'd have a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which is essentially a push button that you push and it has little strobe lights that make you aware that there is a pedestrian waiting to cross. From there, you would continue on the south side of Lombardi Access Road, working your way to the east. That would be an eight-foot wide concrete sidewalk, five-foot grass terrace. Along the front of the businesses, which are a few restaurants, strip mall, gas station, and a grocery store. As you get to the intersection at Marley, the sidewalk does have to skinny up to six feet wide due to the fact of there's right-of-way constraints at that point. At that, in that location there, I have a little zoomed-in view. We're looking to have a sidewalk cross the Lombardi Access Road to the north. It'd run about approximately 180 feet and tie into an existing crosswalk that's in the southern leg of Lombardi and Marley. So this crosswalk that you see here, it's kind of a faded red color. There is already push buttons there and a countdown timer for pedestrians to cross. You do also have the option to head to the south, down the west side of Marley. As you head down the west side of Marley, there'll be then a mid-block crossing just south of the driveway for the gas station. That you'd be able to cross to the east, allowing you to walk towards the podium of Titletown. Or from there, you can also continue to the south. If you continue to the south, you'd be tying into the sidewalk that's on the north side of Brookwood that's existing. From there, you can also head to the west. You can see there's two more crosswalks. And then there is a five-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of Brookwood. All the way until you get to Argon and then you can cross there and get to the west side of Argon again. So with that, we brought this in front of the Titletown group on November 28th, brought it back to Bike and Ped. Actually, last night, Public Works and Protection got to see it on December 5th. The recommendation was to proceed with this route to help us to finalize our plans to get this project out to bid during the first couple of months of 2024. So with that, I will answer any questions.
You know, the only gripe I got about it, you got an eight-foot sidewalk in certain areas there. In our entertainment district, right down the street, we got four or five-foot sidewalks. And we got more traffic down here than you're going to have down there. That's my only comment. And I don't need an answer for it.
Right, yeah, so certain areas, I know when you get closer to, you know, I don't know how wide the sidewalks are on Mike McCarthy. But there is sidewalks in that area. We do have a concrete terrace in those areas to help kind of alleviate those areas, but. Yeah, when you get to Morris, like the section of Morris that we redid, that is a five-foot wide sidewalk, so it is, it is narrower. That is your standard sidewalk is five feet wide. But as, as we all know, if you are trying to walk next to your significant other, five feet wide does get to be tight at times.
What about the narrow one in front of the brewery and the hotel on Ridge Road? I think it's pretty narrow there. I never understood that.
Oh, at Hinterland?
Hinterland and Lodge Kohler.
And Kohler.
Yeah, Lodge Kohler and Hinterland.
I think, I think Gary did not necessarily answer the question or respond to the statement, but ultimately, obviously, we have peak flow. Situations, game day traffic, whether that's on Lombardi Access Road or in the sports and entertainment district. I'm not. Trying to dispute between one versus the other. But we do know we have increased pedestrian activity on those game day type situations. On the access road where the eight-foot sidewalk is located, we do have room within the right-of-way to accommodate that. In some of the other areas that you've discussed, there may be constraints with the amount of right-of-way. And that's one of the main reasons why the sidewalk itself is reduced in width in certain locations in this project. Is primarily because of constraints in the right-of-way. I would suspect, and I'm sure they're digging into it. That the right-of-way is pretty limited on Ridge and that's maybe why the sidewalks are a little bit narrower, narrower there than, than on Lombardi Access Road.
Yeah, that is exactly it. We did on Ridge Road near the brewery and the hotel. There is portions that it's eight feet wide. I'm just looking here. There is areas that it is a bit narrower. It's at that six feet wide. I'm not certain as to why it's six feet wide in that location, but there is portions where it is. Eight, like, like right in front of Kroll's. You can see there.
That's not an eight-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, we can look into it further.
Brian, what is the terrace area on Brookwood and, and the access road again?
Five feet.
On both?
Yes, five feet on both.
And then the only place where it's up against the road is on Marley because of the lack of space there. So that'll be tight against the curb then.
That is correct. Yeah, both on the west side and the east side of Marley. It's a six-foot wide sidewalk. Tight up against the back of curb, pinched against the right-of-way. So it's, it's really the right-of-way constraints that's driving the width.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Brian, my question would be, on that crosswalk across Argon to the Lombardi Access Road. The pedestrian crossing, you know, buttons and that, is there any way that could be tied into the traffic lights? On Lombardi because people will come zipping off Lombardi there and turn that direction and. It's, it's not that many feet there. If there's just some way there could be a warning there, I'm not sure if that's even possible, but. I think that would definitely make, make it be a safer area. If there's some way, there could be some connection. You know, like I know down here, you know, the way the traffic lights operate around the train tracks and things like that. Where okay, you know, if there's some connection that can be done, I think it would be, it would just make it that much better.
Was that at, at Marley or Argon?
It's one at Argon.
At Argon.
Because.
Yeah, that's something that we can, we can look into.
I, I just think it would be good to look into that because you're going to be, people are zipping off the highway, coming on Lombardi, there's no stop and they're going to come around that corner. And then all of a sudden, these lights are going to be flashing because somebody's crossing. It'd be nice if there's some. Make, get an arrow there that when that button would get pushed, that arrow would start flashing yellow or something. Just so that somebody would go, whoa, something might be ahead.
Yeah, that's something we can look into. That's the county's intersection, but it's maybe something that they can integrate into the controller.
I knew you were gonna, I knew that was going to be part of the answer.
Right, and it's, it's not, it's not potentially impossible, but it's something that we can have that conversation with the county.
Be good.
What about looking also into making that radius smaller coming in so people can't come so fast onto Argon? And I know it's reconfiguring that intersection a bit, but that would also slow them down, Jay, because they'd have to slow down to make that turn.
We could have that be part of the conversation that we have with the county. I'm assuming that, that, that radius is determined based on turn movements that they ran when you're running. A 53-foot wide trailer and then you have the splitter island median there. I'm assuming that that's why the width is there.
Yeah.
That's generally how you determine the radius is you run turn movements through, through a computer system and it lets you know, you know, where the back tires. Of that trailer and tractor are. But something that we can, we can ask the county about.
Yeah, another way to slow vehicles down in that turn, in that corner.
That's an area that I live in and Michelle and I, my wife, walk the dog. Quite often and I think the flashing lights. Proposal is definitely needed. As far as going beyond that. I'm not sure how much, you know, that's going to help.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I don't, I don't think we have to beat it to death.
No, I kind of feel the same way. If it's something that's easy to do, I think we should do it, but if it isn't, okay.
Yeah.
Right, and that was one of the reasons I know we brought it up in Bike and Ped was to move it to the south. To allow that traffic to kind of hopefully slow down a little bit after coming around that corner and then. Argon is narrower there, so you're not in that real wide section of the intersection. So. You're only crossing two lanes of traffic rather than this really wide right turn lane. And that's one of the things that. We weighed out as being a pro during Bike and Ped meeting.
Who's going to be responsible for snow removal, especially like on Brookwood? I would imagine on Lombardi Access, we're going to be doing, is it us or the county?
No, so ultimately, all these sidewalks, with the exception of the areas that are in right-of-way, would be removed by the adjacent, the snow would be removed by the adjacent property owner. There's going to be small areas within like the splitter islands. So there's that small pork chop area at Brookwood. Another example would be up here in the southern leg of Marley and Lombardi. You know, there ultimately isn't an adjacent property owner there that is all right-of-way. So we would be responsible for removing the snow in those areas. So there is a few locations. That will have to remove the snow, but ultimately the bulk of it will be borne by the adjacent property owner.
You know, Brian, when you do this, are the property owners notified about the snow removal?
That's something that we'll make them aware of during our public information meeting that we have on January 10th. You know, majority of these places, I'm assuming they use a commercial company to remove the snow. So hopefully it won't be too much of a burden because they usually have heavier equipment than what the average homeowner has.
So speaking of January 10th. So I just want to be clear. So what we're voting on here. Is we're not passing something that's going to be done because we're going to have a public. What are we voting on here? Well, just, just this proposal.
Design.
Correct.
So ultimately, what you're voting on tonight is the concept that's being presented. So as far as where sidewalks. The, the location of those sidewalks, obviously, the project includes the reconstruction of the Lombardi Access Road. So the design scope, so we're at maybe 20, 25% of design at this point. Upon this approval, they can continue to work with that and then basically take these concepts and put them on the actual design sheet. So when we go and have public informational meetings, the, the concept has been already approved. You're authorizing Public Works and the engineer to basically do the final design and prep for bidding.
Okay, all right.
This is a 24 project.
How long do you think it's going to take to do this?
The project itself? You know, we're, we're going to do it in phase construction. So we're planning to do Lombardi Access Road first. And then we'll flip over and do Brookwood. All said and done, I would say it's between four to six months. With that, there is quite a few utility relocates that need to take place. The project scope is actually. With the exception of coordinating with the property owners, is actually pretty straightforward. There is no water main or sanitary sewer in these segments of roadway, but there are utilities. Perfect examples, if you go down Brookwood, I mean, there's pedestrian, pedestals that are right in the middle of where the sidewalk needs to be. So the, the biggest challenge will be is getting the utilities where they need to be along with our hydrants. Our hydrants are in the way. But the actual construction of the roadway and the sidewalk isn't overly complex. So hopefully, hoping that, you know, there is good coordination and the utilities get out of the way in time for us, hoping that it goes smooth.
I'd make a motion to proceed with an eight-foot sidewalk on the south side of Lombardi Access Road with crosswalks mid-block on Argon and Marley between Lombardi Access Road. And Brookwood, also in the west leg of the intersection of Marley and Lombardi Access Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed with the access road pedestrian accommodations and reconstruction. Any other comments?
Is, Brian, as far as you said it's going to be done in phases, is it two phases, three phases?
Right now, we're currently looking at two phases.
Two phases?
Yep.
Okay. So what's going to be like first one, first phase, what's going to be blocked off compared to the second phase?
So first phase.
There'd be a lot of businesses there that are going to be affected.
First phase, we'd block off Lombardi Access Road. We'd have business signage to get the. The people that are visiting the businesses to come to their back entrance. And then we would flip around and do, then do the backside of their properties. That's all stuff that during the public information meeting, we want to. You know, talk about that with the property owners to see if that is an acceptable method. But the, we're, we're definitely aware that we're going to need to have lots of business signing in place to make sure that. The guests that are looking to go to their, you know, favorite restaurant or grocery store can get there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10E, Consider Discuss Act, position description of village attorney/deputy village manager. Human Resources Generalist, Deputy Clerk One, Assistant Zoning Administrator/Code Enforcement Officer, and Engineering Tech. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. As the board is aware, as part of the 2024 budget. That particular budget had a number of positions identified for filling in the next calendar year. As well as the reclassification or kind of reshifting of responsibilities for other positions within the village. With you tonight are five specific job descriptions, four positions that are either being retooled. Or are being recreated or being created as part of the 2024 budget. Two of the positions that are more or less being recreated is the village attorney/deputy village manager position. It's part of the overall organizational structure of the village. We are looking to. Ship some responsibilities to that individual, that incumbent to oversee. The day-to-day responsibilities of human resource administration as well as the risk and liability program. Traditionally, those areas of responsibility have been placed under the village manager and so as a result, we're making that move. With that, we are looking as part of the budget to create and hire a human resources generalist. Presently, we do not have an on-staff generalist, but rather contract for those services. We would effectively eliminate our regular contracted service for human resources and that burden of responsibility would fall on this newly created position. Of which would report to that village attorney/deputy village manager because that is part of that HR function. The third position is the deputy clerk one position. This is not technically a new position per se from a headcount standpoint. But we will be having a retirement of our assessment technician in early 2024, February to be exact. And we are retooling that position and effectively making it a deputy clerk position. That will report to the village clerk and assume the responsibilities that the clerk's office has. As you may be aware. has. As you may be aware, as part of the shared revenue bill that was passed this last year, the state has eliminated the vast majority of personal property tax collection for manufacturing and commercial enterprises. That was a major component of our assessment technician's job, and so we no longer need that full-time assessment technician to do that work. With that, the deputy clerk one will assume some administrative responsibilities for our assessor to accommodate issues with constituents and residents in the community. The fourth position is the code enforcement officer/assistant zoning administrator. Again, this position had been requested for a number of years. We presently have a part-time code enforcement officer. This effectively kind of eliminates that part-time code enforcement officer and broadens the overall scope of the position by assigning zoning administration responsibilities to code enforcement. If you're familiar with code enforcement, you'll recognize that zoning code is a predominant aspect of code enforcement, so having the added responsibilities of assisting in the administration of the zoning code was important, and those are incorporated into the job description. And then finally, the engineering technician position, again, incorporated in the budget. At present, the work that is being performed by the, by an engineering technician is contracted out, and through our own analysis, we identified an opportunity for overall kind of transfer of responsibilities and eliminating the cost associated with contracting engineering services out. And by doing that, that gives us more resources on a regular, full-time basis throughout the year versus just as needed to inspect a specific project. Again, we're looking to hire these positions. These are positions that we're either transferring responsibilities to or hiring for in early 2024. So if approved tonight, we'll begin the announcement to fill these positions basically immediately following today. We'll look to probably start reviewing applicants for these positions midway to the latter part of January, in hopes of filling these positions towards the end of January or into February. Again, having some of these transfers allows us to accommodate some of the changes that are happening with our current staff. As I mentioned, our assessment technician is going to be retiring, and so it's important for us to fill that position so that there's an easy transfer. We will have another retirement that will be in early 2024, that will be transferring a vast majority of the human resources generalist responsibilities to that individual. So that, that's the importance of trying to fill these positions, is to really kind of accommodate some of the attrition that is planned in early 2024. So with that, if you have any comments or questions or suggested changes, the job descriptions were included in your packet and are for your consideration and approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on these positions?
Well, I was a little afraid of my code enforcement man, but they straightened me out on that today, so I'm quite happy with that. So it only took me about 12 years to get this, so I'm happy with what we got. It's a shame we're losing a few key people here, but let's hope we can get some well-educated people in those positions that are knowledgeable in it and do good for our community because they answer to a lot of our constituents, so. I don't know, I guess if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the positions quoted in this.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the position descriptions for the items in 10E. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number 11, items for next agenda. If you have anything, give the office a call. Number 12, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabon may convene into closed session pursuant to item 12A and 12B. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, parent 2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Service.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie.
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session.
This conference is no longer being recorded.